... United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty just as well.
Before I get started, I would like to welcome Mr. Daley here to our little operation, and you will be our chief administrator for the next few months. Welcome. Now, would you please hold the roll.
Yes, Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mr. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
President.
Mr. Gutierrez.
President.
Mr. McDowell.
President.
Mr. Parkett.
President.
Mr. Zack.
He will be late.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 10th, 2019 meeting. Motion for the minutes.
Second.
We did have an executive session on November 7th, 2019. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Now, we had an executive session on November 7th for legal and personnel issues. The November 7th minute is taken. Mr. Parkett, would you read the finance report, please?
Yes.
Provided.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman. The bill report for the month of October 2019, administration, $4,595.55. Tax collection, $96.67. Legal services, 627. Borough building, $5,613.80. Police, $6,777.38. Fire, $1,809.15. Code enforcement, $68,763.40. Streets, $15,712.58. Parking, $45.45. Insurance and benefits, $24,071.55. Recreation, $1,519.71. So, for the month of October 2019, $129,432.24. Make a motion except for bill report as read.
I think that was a really last, no, young faces. I have six more. No.
Oh, on the other side. $129,432.24.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Parkett, seconded by Mr. Conger. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
And Mr. Parkett.
Yes. Okay, the tax collector's report for the month of October 2019, total collected in deposit, $3,671.64. Total commission, $182.58. Make a motion except the tax collector's report.
Second.
Motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Conger. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Payroll report for the month of October 2019, $5,094.64. Borough building, $495. Police, $35,500.37. Fire, $142.62. Code enforcement, $1,314. Sanitation, $1,477.50. Highways and streets, $19,222.68. Total for October 2019, $64,098.81. This time, I'd like to make a motion to add Terry Petroski to the PNC account so that she can sign checks as needed.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Parkett.
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
That concludes the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Parkett. Don't know if there's anything for the health and sanitation, but Mr. Conger, would you read that report that was given to you?
Okay. The New York Borough Code Enforcement Officers Report to Council, 10/31/2019. Inspections, 154. zoning permits, four. Street opening permits, one. Sublime's orders, 79. Hearings and citations, magistrate, 11. Citations issued, four. And projects, and I'm not real familiar with this, but if somebody else can enlighten me on it here or enlighten the public, subdivision, 122 Melon Avenue. I'm assuming that's a house that's going to be split into two partments or something like that?
This was before the commission of...
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And that's at 122 Melon Avenue, De Nora. That ends the code enforcement officers' report. Code enforcement report for the month of October 2019, permits issued, seven. Construction costs, $31,464. Permit fees, $472. Registration permit fees for the month of October 2019, $585. Occupancy fee report for the month of October 2019, $150. Madam Chairman, that ends the code enforcement report.
Thank you, Mr. Conger. Mr. Gutierrez, could you please read the report as provided to you?
I want to make a motion to approve the appointment of Jim Jericho to the vacant position on the recreation board.
Second.
A motion on the floor by Mr. Gutierrez, seconded by Mr. Parkett. Any questions or comments?
I've known this guy from high school. He was known in that day as Jimmy J. I haven't seen him since, but open the board, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Questions, please.
Okay, next, the park ground fees for the month of October. There was $200 collected for rentals. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Mr. Conger, the community affairs, the community affairs report is provided to you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. On the banquet hall rental report for the month of October 2019, money's collected, $550. And I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Philip Kapanic and to authorize the public work supervisor to solicit applications for his replacement.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gutierrez. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, that is all I have for the community affairs and Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Conger. Mrs. Bryce, could you please read the rate report for the highways and streets?
Thank you. Motion to approve the final certificate of approval for the Delora catch basin replacement project.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Conger. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Questions, please.
Motion to approve the CDPG year 2020 funding request as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Parkett. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Questions, please.
Motion to authorize Gannett Fleming to re-advertise the Storm City Island replacement project.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Conger. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Questions, please.
Motion to approve payment from the sewer fund for two Gannett Fleming invoices in the amount of $750.32, $1,031 related to the short place plan sewer extension.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDowell. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
And Mr. Zack. Questions, please.
President Ackerman, that's all I have on my...
Thank you, Mrs. Bryce. Mr. McDowell, would you please read the report as provided for you, public safety?
Motion to approve the resolution number 2019 pass 1 for adopting that, please.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Parkett. Any questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Mr. Zack.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, could we reopen the code enforcement because I found one report for the thousand order, and I just located it now.
Okay.
Thank you. The sanitation report for the month of October 2019, money's collected during the month of October, $9,335.62. Delinquent sanitation fees collected through the magistrate, $1,244.84. Thank you for opening that back up, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Conger. Okay, Mr. McDowell.
We had a police report. We had 255 total calls.
Excuse me, could you speak up?
Yeah, 255 total calls for the month of October. Out of those, we had 33 arrests reported, 29 up there, for a total of about $42.35.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. The only thing I have tonight is there's a light-up night for the borough, and it's on November 29th, the day after Thanksgiving, from 6:00 to 8:00. I'd like to see a big turnout on the block, the way we did for the festival, so... Mr. McDonough, Mayor McDonough, your report, please.
I just wanted to say that this past month, we had trick or treat. I got to take my son up on top of the hill, and it was wonderful. I saw a lot of kids out, a lot of families out. The one thing I did want to say was there was not a block that I went to up on top of the hill with my son, that I did not see a fireman or a police officer. And to see kids running up to police officers for candy and talking to them and knowing that we had officials and good members of our community always looking out for our youngsters hid my heart good. It was a wonderful day, and I thank them very much. Also, I hope everyone had a good Veterans Day. Our town looked very nice. I don't know if anyone is aware, but there was a windstorm the week before, Mike. A lot of the flags were down, and thank you to everybody that picked them up and rolled them up and left them, at least leaning against the poles. So, thank you, Mike, for the quick response and making sure our town looked good. Please come out a twinkle bright night. It's always a good time, a wonderful day to celebrate with the blessings of the community. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tuppan, do you have a report?
I have a report.
Thank you. Mr. Bryce.
No report.
Mr. Petroski.
No report.
That's who lives in here, our current board sponsor. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, Madam Chairman. In the last several months, as most everyone knows, we've been struggling to hire a borough administrator. It has come to my attention in watching an employee who came back, had been here before, Mrs. Terry Petroski. She has run the whole office, done both jobs out there by herself. She's also worked with two borough managers and worked with them very, very well. She knows the, this borough from the bottom up. She's a lifetime resident of this borough, and it is my honor and my pleasure to put her name in nomination and make a motion that we hire Terry Petroski as the borough administrator. I don't think we can find anyone better at a salary of $45,000. There will be no benefits other than the standard benefits because her husband already has a family plan, so that will save us $2,000 a month. That's $24,000, and she's coming in at about $10,000 under what the minimum we could probably get someone. So, the borough is saving probably close to $35,000, and we're getting an employee that knows this borough from the bottom up. I don't think there's a better hire out there. I'm proud to put her name in nomination and make a motion with that effect.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Conger. Do we have a second? Mr. McDowell? Any questions or comments?
I'd like to say something. Could you please make...
Question, no, it is...
Excuse me?
Wait a minute.
I would like to say that I've, you know, I've watched her performance. I have nothing to say about whether we should hire her or not. We never talked about this previously. It was not discussed at a work session. The pay was not discussed anywhere. Listen, it should have been discussed. It should have been open. It should have been on this agenda, but it was not. And I think that the new council coming in should make the call on who they choose to work with. Now, you can hire her, which we're already paying Mr. Daley a consultation salary for November and December, and I'm not, again, it's not about hiring or not hiring. I just think right now, we shouldn't make a financial decision that we have not put into our budget or we have not considered. And it was not, it was not brought up, and it's not on the agenda. That's my point. So, how it goes, I don't know why. Another thing, I know you can hire people, but the new councilman has the right to rescind that if they want. I just don't know why we're just not waiting until the new council is, and let the new council is going to work with her and be with her, make the decisions.
Okay, can I, Madam Chairman, can I go further to that? Terry Petroski, she knows the borough from the bottom up. The one thing that she don't know, and she knows a lot of, is the administrator position. We have Mr. Daley here for at least two months, who is an expert in this field and can get her trained through the budget process. We're now in the budget. She is going to be here at the most critical time in the borough, and he can also give her all the information about grants and everything. And I, my motion would also, I would like to add to that motion, that we retain Mr. Daley as needed. That will take, the new council coming in can decide if Mrs. Petroski needs more time to do the job, and Mr. Daley will help us make the call. I think that is the wisest choice for the borough. I don't think there's a better hire out there anymore. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And again, I'm talking about money. I just don't see what the rush is to do it right now when we have time. This is why we hired Mr. Jason Daley. He's been us to the end of the year. I'm just talking the financial aspect, okay? That's all I'm saying here. I'm talking financial, which I don't think we're, as a matter of fact, I don't know how we're going to end up at the end. Are we in the red or are we in the black for this year?
We're in the white.
No, we're not.
We're in the white.
No, we're not.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and I have a second.
Hold on.
Here we go.
You had another councilman that wished to speak.
Who? Mr. McDowell? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I feel somewhat the same as Mrs. Bryce, because, you know, we have three new members of council coming in within the next six to eight weeks. I believe that they should be part of this process. You know, it's nothing that's, if you go for a vote, my vote will be yes to Terry because I know that she's the best candidate, but I think the new council needs to have some input on this. It's not a question that, they could change it when they come in. That's not fair to her. Let her see where she stands with everybody. Don't put her in and then come six, eight weeks from now, you know, you want to change things. I don't think that would happen, but there is that possibility. If we didn't have a new council coming in, three new members, I probably, if this would have happened during the primary, I probably wouldn't have said anything. But the general election is over. The new council members will be seated the first meeting in January. Is there any problem with us waiting till then?
It's six weeks.
She's still going to need, Mr. Daley will still be here. You know, there's no reason that he can't call her and, hey, look at this, I want you to see this, you know, you might be, there's no problem with that, but why do we have to rush and do everything in a hurry?
Like I said, I, I, I carry, I like Terry, I have talked to Terry. I'm just talking about the financial aspect of it. One more month is not going to change.
Mr. Greco, Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Vavelko.
Mr. Bautt, we should have some input, you know what I mean?
All right, I'll say something to that. First, the borough doesn't start a day-to-day business for two months until the new people come in. Second of all...
Change on top of that.
Hire full-time employees at will. It's day-to-day with them. They could go in anytime. So, the new council coming hires them by January environment.
Right. But why would anybody do this? What's the point?
Is that the right thing? We searched for how long for borough administration?
Oh, well, that would be a problem.
We searched for how long, excuse me.
Six months. We waited six months. One more month.
Excuse me. You talked, I'm going to have a chance to speak.
You need to go.
We searched for how long for borough administration. You're not going to find anybody more qualified than Terry. She knows the system. She knows the people. She's already died. She's doing it three days a week with Jason in here. What's the difference?
We're paying, when I'm talking about the financial part, he does not make the greatest financial decisions here in these last four years. I'm questioning, why are we paying this money? None of you has shown me where this money's coming from. All I'm saying is wait six weeks and let the new council decide.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to add one thing to the council. There's a motion on the floor. I think this was very well thought out by our council right now, and there's a motion on to take a vote. We can understand why council's going to vote the way they see fit. I think all points would be considered right now during this vote.
Why is it not on the agenda? It stands to my question.
Does the motion have to be on the agenda?
It should be. You would think it should be.
Mr. Tuppan, I was to lay our solace in our...
It doesn't have, you know what, how it's always so convenient that it doesn't have to be by this whole... You know?
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
I understand. I don't have enough information to make this...
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Mr. Zack.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
When does the money start?
Pardon me?
When do we start paying the money?
The motion actually is starting...
It's starting probably... It could be effective tomorrow.
Just for purposes of the minutes and the record, I would just ask council, considers having a second motion to establish a start.
Let's make the start date Monday. Is that the beginning of the payroll period?
Monday. Yes.
Okay.
It's always start of Monday.
I'll make a motion that it's Monday, what is that, November 18th? Is it 18?
No, second.
Then we're going to pay her and Mr. Daley. Okay.
We're paying Mr. Daley to train her so that we...
Well, that's why we hired him, to train her. And now we, you know, again, where is the money coming from?
We made the motion.
Where is that in the budget?
We have a motion. We voted. We have another motion on the floor. We have a second by Mr. Parkett. Questions or comments? Mr. Daley, please call the roll for the second motion.
Mrs. Ackerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryce.
I understand, but I haven't seen where the money's coming from.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Mr. Zack. Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, I have another motion.
Yes, sir.
When the present council leaves after next meeting in December, I would like to have all the keys, when I turn my key in, I would like to have all the keys, our local locksmith redo all the keys for the entire borough building, issue new keys to the new council coming in, because those keys have been around 15, 20 years ago.
No, they have not.
That's all new.
We've just got a logbook.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't been new since I've been here.
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has.
They can't be copied.
All the keys are numbered and logged in a book upstairs.
Yes, they are. They are numbered and logged, yeah. And they can't be duplicated.
Upstairs. There's a logbook in the, me and Mr. Daley looked at it the other day.
I'll still put the motion out there.
That's an expense we can't take on. There's no reason for it.
Well, then, no.
No.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mr. Gutierrez. Questions or comments?
Honest to God.
Mr. Daley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ackerman.
No.
Mrs. Bryce.
No.
Mr. Conger.
Aye.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Parkett.
Aye.
Mr. Zack. Now, the motion carries.
The passes will be...
No other new business? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, I speak.
Did you sign?
No, ma'am. I didn't have a reason to speak.
Oh.
Now I do.
Okay.
We can, we can. Are you permitted to?
We do. Oh, we can, okay. We can. Listen to you.
Thank you. You know, I can only speak for myself coming on in January. I'm 100% in favor of who was just hired. I do think, though, that that was a very weasel thing to do on Mr. McConner's part. And I'll say this openly, he waited till the last month. He was in work session this past week, was brought up by Mr. Daley, that we should hire her. Nobody said two words. Not one of you spoke two words.
May I ask you a question?
Excluding, Mr. Zack, who wasn't here. Now, I'm 100% in hiring her, and I'm, and I'm all in favor of the salary, possibly even more, since you were going to order some banana, $53,000, who refused the job. I agree that she should get paid. I've been talking to her and asking her if she would ask, accept the job.